We'll go ahead and get our meeting called to order. It is 5:30, and I'm going to take my mask off since we are socially distanced. And it's hard for, sometimes it comes across as muffled talk. So I hope you'll work with me and be okay with that. I do want to remind you that this is our workshop this evening. Tonight, we'll be discussing all of the items that we'll be voting on in the coming weeks. So we will not actually be taking any official action on any of the items that we discuss this evening. Also, I do believe at the end of our meeting, we will go into executive session for real estate purposes. So just want to go ahead and give you a heads up on that. But since we are called to order, the only action that we will take tonight is the approval of the agenda. And I am going to recommend that we have one change, and then that will be for the consideration of the council. Item number six under new business is review of the public art policy. And Pete has been working on that with several representatives of the community. And we want that to go through our downtown development authority first before it comes back to the city council for consideration. We want to have the DDA's blessing and input on that. So we'd like to delay that discussion until a future meeting. So that's the only change that I have recommended. But looking over the agenda that was submitted, if there are any other changes or if you're good with that, I'll take a motion to that effect.
I move we approve with your one tip.
With that change, okay, thank you, Jack. Is there a second? Thank you, MJ. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed. All right, and Councilman Terrell was going to be on the phone with us this evening. And I know Jessica's trying to call him a time or two, and we're not able to get him. So if he, if any of you should get a text or a phone call from Johnny, let us know, and then we'll stop and dial in and bring him into the meeting. So maybe he was just running late or got tied up for a few minutes. Okay, the first item on our agenda is a presentation from Meredith Lipson and Justin Johnson with our auditors Malden and Jenkins. So Pete, is there anything you need to introduce before that?
I don't, I think each of you know them from years past. And I'm going to say a couple of things soon as they get done. But we certainly appreciate the effort and the delivery this year, given the circumstances behind the COVID and what we were facing last year. So Justin, thank you.
Sure. Everybody hear me okay? Sounds like I'm on a Zoom call, right? Can you see me? Can you hear me? Well, thank y'all for having us this afternoon. And like Pete said, this is Meredith Lipson, the partner in charge of the audit. And I'm Justin Johnson, the director in charge of the audit. So I mean, if you probably seen my faces around here for the last few weeks, or got here often, but over the years at least as well. But you should have seen two documents you have in front of you. One is the actual financial statements. That's your bigger, thicker book we have here. Not really going to get into details of this today, but we'll be glad to answer any questions if you have any about the actual financial statements themselves. The other document you're going to see is the, what we call the auditor's discussion and analysis. It's kind of what I'm going to go over today. It's the smaller book, and it's kind of summarizes the financial statements and the results of our audit. And then the third piece of paper is actually our management letter, and we'll cover that at the end as well. So again, thank you for having us. And again, this book, the auditor discussion analysis that we're going to be going through here, we're going to cover some key things here. First and foremost, you'll see as you flip through, it's kind of our governmental practice and who Malden Jenkins is. And we'd be glad for you to flip through that and see what all we are at Malden and Jenkins. Then we're going to start covering the independent auditor's report. And that's why most of you here to know that we do have a clean audit opinion. It was an unmodified opinion, and so it was a clean audit. Then we're going to go over some of the overview of the financial statements, and we'll hit some of the numbers at a high level. And then we're going to go on to offer you some recommendations that we had throughout our audit process. So if you'll flip back, well, like I said, the first few pages, pages two and three, kind of cover who Malden Jenkins is, and would love for you to read through that. As well, let me remind you one more thing, back to our financial statements. If you read one thing out of these financial statements, probably be a great idea to read the MDNA, the management discussion and analysis. And that starts on page four of the financial statements themselves. And that's something that Ms. Dana put together, and it's a great read. And it will give you a great overview of the financial statements and the shape of the city at this point. And diving into page five here, as you'll see, we're focusing on the general fund itself, and which is the, you know, the crutch of your, of the city of Tifton. The general fund kind of gives you the best idea of what kind of shape the city of Tifton is in here. So the general fund, as you can see here, it kind of gives you a snapshot of the revenues that we have here. You can see the bulk of your revenues come from your property taxes. And the second piece probably mostly is the sales taxes. And then as well, you have, in this case, you have some other revenues this year. As you can see, that 3.4 there. But this pie chart here kind of shows you what all your revenues were made up of. And turning on to page six here, you'll get a kind of a snapshot also of your expenditures. As you can see here in green, your public safety is your largest piece of the pie there with your public safety, as well as coming down to your general government and also your public works. And you can see those numbers there that would tie back to your financial statements in the bigger book here. And then as we read a little bit below here, your general fund had a fund balance of approximately $8.9 million. This is going to kind of correlate to page seven right there. But general fund, fund balance of 8.9. And of course, your fund balance doesn't necessarily equal cash on hand and available to spend. Fund balance is the difference between assets and liabilities, including deferred inflows of resources. And only a portion of it is which is cash and available to spend. Included in the overall budget is cash, and cash equivalents of approximately $15.7 million in the general fund. And the general fund has accounts payable and accrued liabilities at June 30, about $624,000. And it kind of give you a kind of a ratio here. The general fund encourages expenditures of approximately $1.1 million per month. Therefore, sitting in fund balance right now is about eight months of coverage, which is really a good number there. That you see, you know, various numbers there when you look at different counties and cities across the state of Georgia. But eight months is a good number there. And as you can see on page seven, with the general fund fund balance, kind of a history going back to 2015. And you can see here, '17, '18, '19, you're seeing a great trend here, going from 6.4 in '17 to 6.9 in '18 to 8.8 in 2019. So that's definitely in the direction you want your fund balance to be going. And then flip over to the next page, page eight, you are going to take a snapshot of your enterprise funds, which is your water fund, your sewer fund, your gas fund, and your solid waste fund. And you can see here, we're comparing all the way back to 2015 through 2019. We're showing revenues in blue there and your operating expenses in green. And as you can see, blue outweighs the green in every case here. And on page eight with your water fund, moving over to your sewer fund, you'll see $4 million in revenue and 3.8 in expenses for your sewer fund in 2019. The gas fund being a 4.4 in revenue and 3.9 in expenses for 2019 in your gas fund. And then solid waste, as you can see here on page 10, solid waste is showing revenue of about 3.6 versus 5.9 of expenses. And what that expenses is, is your landfill and post closure costs that we had to accrue at year end. The EPD obviously makes us be in compliance with our post closure and closure costs. And that's where that big jump in expenses is. And it's an accrual we have to make for your liability, for that landfill closure and post closure cost there. Then as we flip on through, onto page 14, this, again, I said this audit was a clean audit, and we had no findings in the financial statements. We did have one mentioned for improvement. And as Pete kind of mentioned here in the beginning, we know that the financial close process was a little bit challenging this year. So that's really kind of the only recommendation for improvement, to get the books closed out. And I think you're all well aware of that issue that we undertook this past year. So that was just really our only management point and recommendation for improvement. And if we move on to page 15, that kind of goes through all your GASM standards that are coming down over the next few months and years. Kind of give you an overlay, probably some good late night reading if you want to read into that. And then page 25 kind of tells you about some of our other services, where we give free continuing education and some other services there. And I know that was probably pretty quick, but we'll open it up for any questions. If anybody has any questions about anything specifically, I will be free to dive into these financials. If anyone wants to dive into the financials, any details or answer any kind of questions you might have.
Jack, do you have no questions?
No, I'm good.
He's shaking his head up there.
So on the solid waste fund, I have a question on that. Solid waste fund, we're recognizing the expense of the post closure. Is that why that increased that much?
That is correct.
What, do we know how much that was? I mean, what would it?
This year, we increased about $2 million. And that's really that difference there, was that this year that we had to accrue that getting the, the EPD has an equation, obviously, that tells us how much we need to be accruing. And then we had to catch it up. I guess we had the landfill expanded over the last year, so we had to expand that calculation as well. So that's what you're seeing a lot of that there in that cost. Now, that's not a cash cost. That's just an accrual, putting that liability on the books.
Wes, and I think everyone understands that at this particular time, we're now, we're probably nose diving into 10 years, give or take, of life for the landfill. So EPD, we're still in the good graces. Our monthly accruals for that particular post closure is tracking, which is good. But I will tell you, that number is going to start jumping up considerably as we move closer to closure. EPD is going to put a lot of, you know, a little more pressure on us to making sure that they're all about having, making sure that money is there for the closure. So I don't know, we don't forecast that. But that, I see that number moving, hence our conversations with the landfill and what we have to do with the landfill. I'm going to be accelerating that in the next couple of months.
And just for council's understanding, I think, Jack, you and I, we looked at this with Pete and finance before. A certain percent of each dollar that we pay for, I guess, the landfill tipping fees goes towards that post closure fund or whatnot. So it's not a hard expense that we're having to take out of the taxes or property taxes. That money is already being accrued for within the per dollar tonnage tipping fee. So just to know that.
Yeah, this is just like a business. It operates on the money that comes in and we pay out. So this is a, what's they call the enterprise fund, so that really doesn't rely on property taxes whatsoever.
That's right.
Any other questions you have? MJ, do you have any questions or comments or anything? Okay, I certainly don't. So thank you very, very much.
You're very welcome. Thank y'all for having us.
Thank you very much.
And I do want to thank Dana and her staff, finance staff, were very helpful throughout this audit process and got us to the finish line this year.
Thank you. And let me just go one step further with the budget. Again, while we're passing out thanks, Jack and Wes, we had some good discussions, and they were in the ditch with me. We were in a real serious situation last year. And I'm proud to say that we have overcome that, and we're at a good place. Our reconciliations are up to date. Our tribe balances are right where they need to be. We understand the financial models, what we have, and et cetera. So it, all in all, we are in probably the best spot. Tifton, Georgia has been in a while, understanding the financial across the board, where we are as a government and as a business. That's a good point. Obviously, that could not have happened without some key people. And I'll call on Emily to come up to the microphone real quick. And as she's coming up, we also had a third party auditor come in. His name is Terry Spivey, and he does this for a business. He comes in and troubleshoots to find out where our ailments are within the financial area. So Terry has done a great job working alongside with Dana, and he has worked extremely hard getting us to this point. But Dana Chancey has really has done a fine job for us as a city, for the community. And now we understand where we are with an audit. It's a proud moment. So I wanted to take this opportunity just to stop for a minute and tell you that the amount of work that has gone in to this upstairs has been just tremendous. So I thought it was very appropriate that we introduced Dana and her staff. But more importantly, recognize the finance department for their work, especially in the last six months with the COVID and me breathing down the necks every week about, you know, about financials. They really have done a super job. So with that, can you please help me do that?
I'd like to call the finance department up front, please. As Pete said, these ladies have done a lot. They have been through it through blood, sweat, and tears. So I'm honored tonight to be able to give them a certificate of appreciation. And ladies, this certificate tonight is in recognition of your hard work, dedication, and the support to the city of Tifton Finance Department. So we appreciate what you do. Tammy Sandifer?
Thank you.
Karina Moreno?
Thank you.
Karina, would you all shift down this way, please?
Oh, the plane of columns for Jonathan.
Come on, Bridget, there you go.
There we go. Tammy Floyd? Teresa Kelly? And Dana Chancey?
All right, Dana, before we say anything else, can you, for the council, for everyone in the audience, can you, can you tell everybody what they do specifically, what their job is, what they handle? Well, I know, I know that's a lot. Give the short version.
We're doing it all.
Sure. We all do a little bit of everything. We share the load with Emily, Karina, she's our council payable, and purchase hold group, and hotel motel collection, and...
Tammy? That's you?
That's good.
That's good.
Plus, out of the day is, she works on horse too. Hey, Tammy Sandifer, she has been with us for a couple of months now, so we're tickled to have her. Right now, she's working on fixed assets. She's been worrying about bank statements and in our journal postings and a little bit of everything in the finance department. Tammy, she does our payroll. That's her main job, but she does a lot of other things too. She helps balance bank statements and journal postings and update all the cash receipts. Everything rebalances that behind the cashier and make sure all that's okay every day. And she transfers money from one account to another account. Plus, she does a lot of her own ice cream. So that's basically Tammy. Teresa here, she is also balance bank statements. She keeps a holder of the enterprise funds. She checks them daily, make sure everything's accurate and everything's going like it should. She also helps with the year reports. Let's come up again. So she does a lot of other things for me, and we have different spreadsheets that she's wonderful with spreadsheets. So she helps us, all of us, we all help each other, and we couldn't have done it without each other. It's a team effort, and I think I have the best finance department.
Well, we agree. So we agree. I just have one question. Is the bandage on your hand because Pete was breathing down your neck so hard? You had to turn around, just punch him right in the face to get him to go back downstairs to his office?
No.
Okay, all right. I just want to be sure. Now, we are so proud of all of you. Listen, you're the heart of this organization. Without you and what you do, the rest of the departments and the rest of the organization can't function. So my hat is off to you. I am not a finance person. That is, so anybody that does what you do, I have the greatest admiration and appreciation for. So thank you very much. And to have an audit of this quality with no issues, I mean, that's, that's really, you know, one recommendation. I mean, that's really, that's really awesome, and we very much appreciate that. So any of the other council members want to chime in? I know we've got our finance committee here and...
And since I am a finance person, normally I'd be a little upset about it. It wasn't really a comment or recommendation, but knowing, you know, where we were, when you change over personnel, especially at the top, it takes a while. My hat's off to Dana and Teresa. They survive numerous meetings with me. I didn't make Dana cry and run out. She was ready to cry because I was a bit upset, but it all worked out. They doubled down, got things straight. They were, we were never in jeopardy, it's just stuff in the wrong place. And when you go looking for stuff in one place, it's supposed to be somewhere else, that's not easy to find. Pete jumped on it, brought a couple of people in. Like I said, we had several tough meetings, as Dana will attest. She saw another side of me, and I sometimes get a little excited. But my hat's off to Dana for pulling it out. And to have this kind of audit after, you know, what we went through looking at was a testament to your leadership and Pete's.
Yeah, it's just, thank you. That means a lot. And just a couple of tidbits, you know, when you talk about internal workings, Karina and Tammy were both promoted. They were down customer service and were promoted, finished degree, and now works up in finance. Teresa is a lettered CPA. So you put all these ladies together, they make one hell of a team. So thank you for all the work, and Dana, thank you for doing what you're doing, and thank you for being here tonight. I appreciate it.
Yes.
Thank you.
It's a good team. Thank y'all. And Meredith and Justin, thank you. Where'd they go there? You were behind the column. Thank you very much, too. We appreciate your work. Thank you. All right, under old business, recommendation or review of the proposed zoning overlay for US Highway 82. Danny, have you got a presentation for us?
Absolutely. So mayor and council, first of all, I like to say these ladies are great. They helped me out a lot, too.
Yeah, they helped us all out.
Yes, they do. I wanted to bring back the zoning. You had asked me to bring it back. I wanted to bring y'all some more specifics to show you, give you more of a visual illustration of what this overlay is trying to accomplish. Talking about overlays, overlays are zoning that is very specific and targeted in area. So we can target one specific area and give it its own rules and regulations. So I want to hand out a map as long as everybody's cool with that. My stuff down the floor. To show this area exactly where we are proposing, where I'm proposing to do this. And this is along Highway 82, and it has to be the front and the next 82. So we're not going to get into properties that are set back a little bit, like my road. This is going to be specifically for properties that touch Highway 82. They are highways, I mean, they are properties along this state route, and we want to keep them that way. And we want them to benefit from the interstate travel, the thousands of travelers that's coming through our state. And by benefit, yes, I'm talking about larger signs. But for larger signs, they also need to give us something. So I wanted to show y'all what that looks like, and in your packet, I just did a mock-up, and Kirsten's not here. And Mr. John Shepherd, they helped me out with this as well. This is a business, this is example one, this is a business right on 82. And I took the sign, or Kirsten did, and faced it towards us. So that way, you can get a better idea of what it will look like, the size, you know, according to the property. So the first one is our current ordinance. That's how we sit. That's what they're allowed to have. That's the landscaping. That is, of course, what we have. That's right there on 82. And example two, they came in, they had to put in landscaping along the front, which is canopy trees. Every 35 linear feet, they're required to put in some type of canopy tree. And they are also required to landscape around the sign posts or poles to help hide that sign. Because, you know, signs are ugly, yes, and so we want to try to hide that. Give us some green, and we'll give you some signs. Also, they gave, provided two amenities. Now, I had a hard time showing, and me and Kirsten, we kind of kicked around a few ideas. We're just going to say that they gave us two amenities, and we're going to talk about amenities in just a moment. So their sign increased by 100 square foot. So from picture one, example one, to example two, that's 100 square feet of difference, okay? And then the last example is the maximum size sign that they could have. That's up to 300 square feet. They would have to provide a total of six amenities to get to that size from our current ordinance, okay? So now I want to show you what those amenities are. Amenities are for anything to help out with visitors, guests, tourists, anybody on the property, aesthetics. So these are just a couple, and of course, there are so many out there. I just wanted to show you a few examples of what that means. It could be art, it could be landscaping, it could be water features. Oh, I'm sorry. Good to see you.
You were so quiet up there.
So these are just a few examples of amenities. So for each amenity, or each time they want to go up in size, currently, we have it at 50 square feet. But each time they want to go up in size, they have to provide us something, something for tourists, something for guests. So that's the idea. And also, this overlay will target parking as well. And they can do the same thing, provide amenities and help reduce parking. And it has to be comparable. And also, we're going to try to encourage shared parking and inter parcel access. And that's those safety things that we talked about last month. So do y'all have any questions about that? Is that, is that better? I would like to provide, you know, something, but I also want to get something in return to help us make our city more aesthetically pleasing. That's one of the busiest intersections we have.
So is that, I mean, what problem or issue are we trying to solve?
We've had requests from business owners along I-75, I mean, along 82, that would like to increase their sign sizes. They would also like to reduce parking. It comes up every single plan review, every renovation that happens, that they would like to. Signs come up just about every day.
So they want to reduce parking?
That's mostly on the development side, yes, sir. But we want to give them the option.
I mean, that's where we have an issue with. We always need more parking than what they want to do.
Yes, sir.
So why would we ever back up and say, well, let's reduce parking and cause an issue?
Well, that's, it's on a case-by-case basis, but the property, what we don't want to end up with is something like a Hobby Lobby. They have this massive parking lot because they have such a large building, and that parking lot is never filled, not even during the main holiday, you know, Christmas. So that's what we're trying to avoid. And also, the traffic that comes off the interstate, they're, they're from all over, and they drive smaller cars, and they, you know, there's lots of other things that go on with people that travel through here.
So why do we have a large parking lot for Hobby Lobby then?
Say that again.
Why the, why does Hobby Lobby have such a large parking lot then?
Because that's, that's what our ordinance requires for that size building. It's the same thing with Walmart, but Walmart's actually fills up, and so does Lowe's. And those are to our standards. But if they have, Hobby Lobby has a business model, and they know what that business model is. And if they come and they say, well, look, your ordinance says we have this many parking, have to have this many parking spaces. Can we reduce this? And this gives them a means to do that without going through a variance process and additional testing and site analysis, parking studies, those sorts of things.
Counsel, I think Danny mentioned it, this has come up a couple of times. We're getting some feedback regarding some businesses, especially on the fringe, to say, we want to make improvement. We want to modify our business, and we're not allowed to do that. So what we're trying to do is, on this 82 corridor, make it a little more feasible with a little more options, give and take. But this is to address, you know, some of the commercial businesses. Would we get a lot of requests? Probably not. But this would allow some flexibility within this corridor, creating an overlay district like this in case someone asks instead of saying no. And that's, this is what we're trying to work on.
On the example that you gave us for the fast food restaurant, you had trees or whatnot.
That's correct.
Would shrubbery be okay? I mean, because, you know, if you put a tree there, and if it's as big as that tree, it covers up the spot, you know. So the, you know, I mean, it's, if I'm spending that kind of money to be at that location, I don't want my place of business covered up by trees.
Right.
So would a really nice, you know, trimmed hedges in the front or something like that suffice?
No, sir. Hedges will do the same thing. It'll, it'll cut out the view from their building and, you know, make it where you can't see. So the idea is doing canopy trees, and so that way, they still have visibility of their building, and they can still have their signs. Because the signs is, it's meant to identify the business from further off, you know.
I think to Wes's point, I think we could, from a land... I think to Wes's point, I think we could, from a landscaping perspective, if y'all want to do this, we could probably suggest two or three species that does not get above the sign and take over, you know, in ten years. So we're a little more forward-thinking than having a tree that grows, you know, fifty foot in the air, so.
Exactly. Well, not only do we have the power lines on both sides of the.
I think we could get smart if we do the amenities, and what we're trying to do is lift, put some green space in instead of the ground cover, but there are trees that are suitable for that.
But as you go off, then your visibility for cars, when cars, you know, whether they're turning in or out or within, we can't then have that issue.
I understand.
They didn't see a car, and we already have enough of that at intersections throughout.
There needs to be a lot of study to this. We're just feeling you out. If you want to entertain it, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. Again, it's a very tight corridor, only if you face 82 or have a parking lot adjacent to it or one other requirement. But this is not a widespread thing. This is a real tight area.
Is there?
Well, and here's the crazy thing is also, is that not every parcel on the Highway 82 corridor is inside the city limits.
Right, that's correct.
So, you know, we make one do this, and then while the other one doesn't do that, that may determine whether or not they want to annex inside the city of Tifton.
Of course.
So we need to also be mindful of that, and I would almost think that we should probably look at our variance procedures and see if we can, I mean, I know we're just basically modifying those procedures, but I don't know, putting a tree in front of a building, I just don't know if that's going to be the ticket to it to offset some of the other things. I don't know.
Does DOT have any say-so in this?
Well, the right-of-way, I cannot remember on 82 what the setback or the right-of-way is, but it'd have to be off the right-of-way, and it's really a good point. It has to be collapsible. It has to be, you know, a car runs off. I mean, they're going to run into another car versus a tree, but we'd have to check on that. Again, there's a lot of work that needs to be done if we could create that on the parking lot or the right-of-way. So this is, we're trying to find some responsibilities of the property business owner to say, look, I want to do this. I want to do this to my sign. Okay, if you want to do this to the sign, we want to offset that. So there may be other options that we could also divat to see if, you know, any other improvements that would be DOT-approved and aesthetically pleasing.
What, is the county less restrictive, or do they have any guidelines, or can you just put whatever you want to?
They are very less restrictive. So they allow as many signs as you want, up to three hundred square feet for each sign, and, I mean, you pretty much do whatever you want to. And I have a case right now where I have, they want to put up a sign. The sign exists, but because of our ordinance, they can't change it out. And, but half of their property is inside the county and half is in the city. They could pick up and move their sign seventy-five feet over and have two monstrosity signs expand them both. That's just one, and that's happening right now, so.
We gotta, gotta be mindful that we are the friendly city.
Well, there's such moving parts in sign ordinances, a monster to begin with anyway. So it just, if you, can you tell me, is this something that you may want to put into study, into P and Z? Is it something you want to see a little more about, or we just want to drop it? But I think to Jack's point, we're running up against some individuals to say, well, right across the street, there are no rules, so I'll just.
That's right. And the goal, and that's been one of your goals since you've been on council, is to grow that tax base and by annexing new properties. And so that's.
We're all about the annexation, but we got to take care of folks now, because everybody's retooling. So whatever, you know, the wave is in commercial businesses, well, we don't have enough signage, so.
There's a lot of, a lot of need to grow.
We've got to be ready to have some adjustments to meet the needs of our existing frontage and future frontage.
Correct.
It's not all about signage. This case is an overlay, but we could certainly counteract that.
But in essence, we're in competition, if you will. The competition's the county. So we might have to do what we need to do there to meet that competition. I mean, it doesn't help if you're sitting there, you know, one business that's in the city can only do this, and the one next door can do all this, and if we don't do something to meet that, then there's no reason for the other one to come into the city.
It's just, I think it's smart growth. I know everybody cringes when you talk about signs. I think that there's a lot of give and take, but I think we could really do some work, smart work, for smart growth for our businesses along the biggest corridor that we have. That would be my recommendation, to study it.
I agree. And our ordinance, our sign ordinance is not being dismantled. All of the stuff that's in there still must be followed. So if they don't take part in this, they still have to follow those things. They don't just, there's not.
Okay. All right, any other questions, comments, suggestions? So I think the message is carry on.
Yeah, to P and Z, okay.
And let's get them involved and continue to.
Rob, we're going to need your help on this one as it goes forward, it gets on the agenda.
All right, any other questions, comments for Danny? All right. Thanks, Danny. Appreciate that very much. All right, Pete, you want to talk to us about update on service delivery strategy? I think we're going to talk about animal control services.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple comments. Some of you may want to have some other things to say with regards to that. I want to dial back a couple months. If you remember, you approved the Form Two for Willow Creek Phase Two, the subdivision out in the county. David Deloche had started Phase Two. It's in the county, but it was not in the service area. And we went back and forth for a few weeks on that documentation. We finished it. We finally came to terms. The county did say, okay, this will work. We filled out all the forms necessary for David Deloche and for DCA. We sent that over to Tifton County with the anticipation of that going forward. Mr. Deloche contacted me just this past week and asked if I heard anything about it. Really caught me off guard. He's talked to EPD, and I've talked to DCA. And it looks as though Tifton County did not submit anything to DCA for Willow Creek Phase Two. So that is a service delivery stall that we're encountering. I did talk to Mr. Deloche just a little while ago, and nothing has been done on his side with respect to that. So I wanted to bring that to your attention, because we'll probably hear about this. I don't know what it means.
Which means he can't build houses. He's got people ready, he's ready to build houses for customers, and he can't build their house.
This is the water service.
Service map, yes.
Water service map.
That's correct.
That we did several weeks ago, because we operate the water system. So we had to update this water service map. We sent what we needed to to the county at least a month.
At least a month?
March, March sixteenth.
For March. And they have to turn it in to DCA, who is, you know, controls everything in Georgia evidently. And nothing's been sent since March.
I was taken aback, to be honest with you. And so my point is service delivery, we do, number one, we don't run a utility like this. So we have new subdivisions going, whether it's in the city or in the county, this is growth in utility. We don't, we just don't do this. It's not a practice. So now we have a very, very Phase Two of a subdivision just dead in the water. So I've talked about with Mr. Deloche, that we have done everything that we needed to do. We have sent all the required paperwork that we needed to submit. Rob and I have talked about this. So this is a service delivery thing leading up to what some of the other comments that I'm going to make. But I wanted to share with you that, because we don't know where this stands now with regards to our status. So it could mean, you know, it could mean some problems for Mr. Deloche, and I hate that, but it has nothing to do with the city of Tifton nor our inability to get the documents that we promised. So that's number one. Number two, it's on July thirteenth, we did send a proposal and all the requirements to the Board of Commissioners with a memo. All the Form Twos, we keep hearing this terminology about Form Twos. You have to have a Form Two to make service delivery legitimate. So it just tells all the details. It lists dates. It lists where the funding comes from. You cannot just go back and forth with proposals on one or two pages. The state does not recognize it. We cannot recognize it legally. You cannot recognize it. So this is our second time. We have provided all the Form Twos with all the services that you talked about in this, along with the intergovernmental agreements, on everything that we said we would do as a compromise. It was very, very well done. Thanks to Wes for putting a lot of thought into this. But as of July twenty-third, we were told that we cannot accept the terms in the correspondence. So my update to you on service delivery strategy is we're continuing, we're still going backwards. My point to you is that that is, that's, it's just unacceptable for the city, unacceptable for our residents and our customers. So therefore, before you tonight, animal control services, again, there's a couple services that the county said that we had some deadlines, which in October, but we simply cannot wait. So the first one, animal control services, I did find a truck in Virginia. It's all set up. The pictures are in your packets. It's a used truck, but it'll work very nicely for what we have to do. I did talk to ESG, and they will be glad to put this up under Public Works if you're ready to move forward on this service. We're looking at probably seventy, seventy-five thousand dollars of new monies to get the position staffed, trained up, and some supplies that we need to handle animal control for a city of Tifton service. So it is at a time now that, I know some of you have been talking with other groups. We have been talking about this for literally two and a half years. I know that there's been a lot of effort put into it. I know we had a mediator. And again, I've counted it. I've counted it on my correspondence that we have been told, let's just put it off a little more, nine times. Nine times over the last two and a half years that we're just going to put it off. And as your manager, I'm ready to go with whatever direction you want to do, but we can't put it off anymore if we want to continue the services or you want to do it with the intensity that I know you have been communicating. All the communication's great, but there really, literally is no more time when you talk about service delivery. We could kick that can down the road one more time, but it goes into next year, and it simply doesn't do anything for us. And again, it's some of the same things that we've been watching, same things that we've been hearing. And I'm ready to go if you are. So the first two things up are the animal control, and I'll talk about the jail agreement in just a minute. But this is something that you have to decide. Again, I think, well, I know we can do it with the monies that we have. And again, providing a new service to the city of Tifton the way it's designed to be, then that is our choice. And now is the time to make those decisions. So I'll leave that one there. If you have any questions of me, I'm just trying to give you a quick crash course on where we are service-delivery-wise, but there simply is no more time.
All right, I want to talk about animal control for a few minutes. I have been contacted by, I'm not going to mention any names, because they've not given me authority to mention their names, but people who are very knowledgeable and very involved with providing services to the shelter. And my own experience has been, it is abysmal. It is, if you have any compassion whatsoever for animals, the way this shelter is run should be illegal, honestly. It's a high-kill shelter. The animals are not taken care of. Jack and I made a surprise visit. It's been some time now. Made a surprise visit out one day just to pop in and kind of see for ourselves what was going on, because we were getting these calls, we were getting these complaints, we were getting these concerns. And we were quite appalled by what we saw. It was confirmed to us that if someone makes a donation to the Tifton-Tifton County Animal Shelter with the assumption that that donation is going to go to the animals for food or for medical care or for whatever they need, that money does not go to the Tifton County Animal, excuse me, the Tifton County Animal Control budget into the shelter budget. It goes into the general fund of the county. The employees at the shelter confirm that. Now, it's also my understanding that we own half that shelter. Is that true? We own half the real estate at that shelter? Is that factual?
Yes.
Okay, so we own half the shelter. We have no involvement or say-so. They told Jack and I, although I don't think we deserve any special treatment, but here we are, elected officials who want to find out and get to the bottom of this, that we can't visit all corners of the shelter. We can't see all that we needed to see. We can't get the information that we need to get. So it's very disconcerting. I know that there is animal control on one hand, and then there's humane societies and volunteers that do things to help with adoption and spaying and neutering and fostering and those kinds of things. There used to be an organization that helped with that. However, we've been told we can't do that anymore with our shelter. So this is my concern. How do we get our foot in the door? If we own half the building, if they're not going to provide the service for us, I see that this is no different. I'm no less passionate about this than Wes is about recreation for kids than we are about the urban redevelopment area. We've got to take care of this community and animal control, and how we treat the weakest of those among us really disturbs me. So I throw all that out there to say, how does this picture and how does this fit into all of those concerns?
I think it's a very, very fair assessment, and I've been hearing, you know, the stories too about the animal shelter itself. Now, look, if we're going to, if that's what you want to do and get into business, I'm really just, I've had enough of the county telling you what's going to happen. And to be quite frank, if we own half the building, we need to give them thirty days, and we're going to go in and start doing that as part of our overall service with animal control. If that's unacceptable to them, then they could donate or give us the building, whatever they want to do.
Or buy us out of half of them. We'll go build our own something.
They need to buy us out of the half.
I'm just, I'm really, I've just had it with this on what the cards that they were playing to you. And it is what it is. It's about the services. We can make it happen. And I would suggest, I mean, if that's what you want to do, that the county attorney does not respond to the city of Tifton very well. So it is either a demand or a date that if we go forward with the services, then we go in and we occupy half the building. It does not matter to us. We can make it happen with volunteers and creating our own other board.
Well, they're not, and it's kind of a catch-22. I get calls from a lot of people who say, well, there's a stray dog in my neighborhood. Well, you almost don't want them to be picked up because the conditions are so horrific there. It's just a death sentence. But at the same time, we need to consider the safety. Well, they won't come in and pick up these animals, you know, and the feral cats are just.
I know. This is going to be a tough road. This is not going to be easy for y'all, and there's got to be a difference. I can't run an animal control thinking that we're going to, you know, try to do, we don't have a shelter yet. That's my point. So we either demand half the building, or they buy us out, whatever it is, maybe that's step one. But animal control, if that's not the case, then we just do animal control, and we bring them, the animals to them as part of the service for our part. So Rob and I could work that out. But again, I'm here to say that if we go and start, if you want to start the services, I can't prolong.
That's, and that's.
I can't do this.
We're at the eleventh hour.
Yeah.
Twelve.
Okay, okay, twelve hour. It's now after midnight, and, you know, the pumpkins turned back into whatever, you know, that kind of thing. But these Form Twos, has the county ever sent us completed Form Twos to accept and say, okay, turn easy?
They have never sent us a Form Two, or they have ever acknowledged a Form Two.
But we've sent them.
Twice.
Twice, and the first ones were exactly, exactly what they had agreed to, but they didn't accept them, nor did they respond and say anything. So we, like you say, you know, kick the can, kick the can, and now we're at that twelfth hour to do something. You know, my experience with the shelter, not good either. In order for me to get a cat picked up, I had to call my county commissioner and have him call the shelter, and within thirty minutes, they were there. Didn't do any good for me, and I already had the cat, I already had the cat caged, and I had done the hard part.
You mentioned the Form Twos, which brings up, I may be sort of getting off subject a little bit, so forgive me, Rob, but the question is for you. At our last meeting, we talked about the state events. Am I using that term properly? Because I asked you very specifically to explain to the public what that means and with regard to. And with regard to the Department of Community Affairs and our Community Development Block Grants and various funding that we get as the city and the county in Ta-ta and Omega. And you were reaching out to Tony Rauw to say, who's the county attorney, to say, can we request this stay-in-abance? Where, where is all that?
Okay, well, I'm glad you mentioned that because I was gonna pick up where Pete left off. Late this afternoon, I got a message from Judge Cross's office. We have a judge assigned to the case, as of today. It's Brian McDaniel. He's out of the Southern Circuit down in Moultrie. I think it was maybe, maybe a week ago, Mark Sanford, who represents Ta-ta and Omega, reached out to me and Tony because I sent out a proposal that we present to the judge of consent order, which you can do to hold the sanctions in advance. Both Mr. Sanford and myself were in agreement to that. I reached out to Tony Rauw and I did not get a response, but I did talk to one of his associates, Nick Kinsley. And I think it was Wednesday or Thursday of last week. He was checking on the status of the judge. I did ask Nick whether or not Tony had talked to him about the proposed consent order, holding the sanction in advance. He said he had not. So I asked him to talk with Tony about it, see if they were in agreement to, you know, to present to the court the consent order. And I had not heard back from him, but when I did get this email about, about four-twenty this afternoon, I emailed Tony Rauw, Nick Kinsley, and Hank Pittman, who are handling the case on behalf of the county. Let them know we've got a judge. Are you agreeable to enter into the consent order? And so hopefully, I'll hear back from them soon, hopefully tomorrow. And if that's the case, then we can go ahead and present to Judge McDaniel a consent order which will hold the sanctions in advance while we're going through the mediation process.
Well, this is what I'm worried about. We have a Community Development Block Grant application in for a major project in our urban redevelopment area, and MJ sits on that board, and I think Abby may have stepped out. Anyway, several that sit on the urban redevelopment board. Where does that leave that vital product, project, excuse me, vital project for this community if we can't get their attorney to even respond to something that's beneficial for all the cities and the municipalities and the counties?
So let me add this. We have, we have filed a motion to hold the sanctions in advance. The easiest way to get that motion granted is if everybody consents to it and you present the order. Now, if for some reason the county doesn't agree to present the consent order, we'll present the motion to the judge.
But y'all remember how important it was to all of us that we worked to get that Community Development Block Grant for the county for the Ruth's Cottage Facility?
Oh, absolutely.
And no question, that was a, that was a, another viable, very important project. And we did what we had to do to make sure that there was no jeopardy in that Community Development Block Grant application because it was that important. What we have on the table for our Urban Redevelopment Agency is that important. It is the part of our town that we have said, we need to commit resources, we need to commit efforts, we need to do something positive. And here we are, now the shoe's on the other foot, and the attorney, well, not our attorney, but the county attorney, Mr. Rauw, will not even respond a month later to our attorney to say, yes, we agree, that's the right thing to do. Let's hold, so that we can, because, guess who else has a Community Development Block Grant on the line? That's not gonna get their project. It's Omega. So here we go again. Every one of those citizens of the City of Omega is a county resident. Every one of the citizens of the City of Tifton is a, is a county resident, including all of those who are in the urban redevelopment area. And I have contacted Bruce, who's our urban redevelopment director, interim director, and asked to come and address the board when they meet because calls need to go to our county commissioners. These projects are vital to our community. If we had done this with the Ruth's Cottage Project, shame on us, but we didn't. And so that's where I guess, you know, I'm just so, I'm, I'm, I'm like all of you. I'm frustrated, I'm tired of it, I'm tired of being told what to do. This is what you're gonna do, and this is how you're gonna behave, and you're gonna like it, or we'll see you in court. And that's basically what the last letter said.
Yeah, yeah, so, just sorry, so we, yes, sir.
So how long do we wait? I mean, say, say the county's gonna get back to us tomorrow. Do we then immediately go to the, to the judge with the order? What, how does that work?
Well, we filed the, I don't have my dates in mind, but we filed the motion at the same time we filed the petition for mandatory mediation, which I think was a couple of weeks ago. Generally, you have thirty days to respond to a motion, so they'll have maybe a couple of more weeks to respond to the motion, and then we can immediately go ahead and ask the judge for a hearing right away.
So we have to wait, you're saying we have to wait two weeks to see if the county does something?
If I don't get a response, I do believe that I, you know, what I will do tomorrow, y'all, I mean, I do believe that the, the county, there's no reason for them not to consent. So I'll reach out again tomorrow afternoon, if I've not heard anything tomorrow morning, and get Tony on the phone, or somebody on the phone, and say, listen, we need to move this thing and get this order to the judge.
We have two municipalities that have major projects on the line.
And, and that's why, of course, that was Mr. Sanford's concern, that's our concern. So again, there was not a whole lot that I could do until we got, got a judge. So we have a judge this afternoon, and so, you know, I'm, you know, working diligently to get this order prepared and get it to the judge. And again, if, if for some reason that the county does not consent to the order, then we'll get a hearing just as quick as we can so we can get, get the judge to decide it.
Okay, going back to the shelter, then you can also, in that same communication, discuss the, the request for how they're gonna handle our half of the shelter.
Well, I can, and, you know, I don't know how, generally what happens is when you have two people who own one piece of property and you want to somehow divide it or deal with it, it's usually what they call a petition for partition. And so that's probably the legal means by which we're gonna have to approach that. I don't know if there's any viability of, you know, sharing it. I, I just don't know. But I think that we should reach out to the county, ask them, we are moving forward with our animal control service. We want to know what, what their thoughts are about utilizing the, the shelter. If, if sharing the shelter is not an option, then I think that either, either we can buy them out, they can buy us out. If that's not an option, then we need to have the property partitioned, which basically means it's gonna be sold and the proceeds divided.
Okay.
We don't need to share.
Okay.
Do you think we need to get this request for them to go, be in agreements with us with the, the, the abance of sanctions before we go and poke them with this animal control stuff?
It's.
I mean, I just, I know.
I think they're just two, two different things.
Yeah, they are two different things.
So.
I know that, but they, you know how they like to group everything together. It's like, okay, you like this on this, oh, wait a minute.
If they withhold, if they withhold approval of that, and the next call is to W A L B, to, to Hayward's Fun Channel, and lay it on the line.
Don't get any.
Pushy footin' around with them. If they don't come back to us tomorrow and say, okay, we're in agreement with that, because it's, it's to our benefit, Omega's benefit, Ta-ta's benefit, and the county's benefit to.
That's right, that's the abance of the sanctions. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, they are two, they are two separate things. I kind of.
One shouldn't have anything to do with the other.
Yeah, and that's what they would do. And they'll go, well, you know, you want us to be friends on this side, but then you want to, you know, hit us with this. You know, I, the frustration of this service delivery stuff, you can feel is at an all-time high between everybody on council. I personally spoke to several commissioners and even the county manager, and you guys gave me an opportunity to try to put something together, and y'all let me do that on the July thirteenth.
Which was.
Deal right here.
Which was an excellent plan.
I mean, if you look at it, and if y'all don't mind, I'm gonna go through this plan because I don't know if it's really been discussed in a public arena. But we offered, and what I basically did is I put myself in, in county commission chair, or county commission seat, and says, okay, Jack Folk's arguments are this, this, and this. MJ's arguments, you know, I mean, the council's arguments are this, this, and this. And then I put myself, obviously, as the city council member, and I said, well, here's what our arguments are against the county commission. He came up with this plan that we presented to them that they ended up rejecting. You know, EMS service has always been funded countywide. We would leave it as it's always been. The library is funded, its funding, we would leave it as, as it has always been in the past. Animal control, prior to all this that we've discussed, we were gonna leave it as, that is the same. Tax collection, we, we contract with the tax commissioner and the county at a rate of two and a half percent fee to provide those services, and it seems to be the most efficient way for us to get our taxes collected. We've been at a hundred percent several times, so, I mean, you know, it works. So we, let's keep it, let's keep it going. And we kept that the same. Elections, we're saying, hey, bill us at the actual cost, you know? Just, you know, make that detailed so we know what we're paying for. Non-emergency phone call, or non-emergency dispatch, you know, that's something that's been brought up here recently that I guess counties have the right to ask for payment for. We agreed to that. We say, we're going to pay you guys two hundred thousand dollars for non-emergencies dispatch. Inmate housing, you know, we're gonna talk about sending our folks to Turner County. And we have been, I mean, we don't live in Turner County. We live in Tiff County. And the sheriff we elect, we've had a contract with him for years to house our inmates. However, the county commissioner, the board of commissioners owns the jail, from my understanding, and the sheriff is just, I guess, the administrator of the jail. So if the county board of commissioners says, we're not letting you contract with that city, or whoever, municipality, or up, whatever, then he can't do that. We want to send our je, people to, to Tiff County Jail because it helps our sheriff. We pay them, I don't know, about a hundred, a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. That's someone's salary, I'm sure, a couple of people's salary, hopefully.
Two fifty.
Two hundred fifty thousand, okay? You know, but that, that goes for salaries to somebody, all right? You know, that, I'm sure that revenue line item into the sheriff's budget is definitely gonna be missed, you know? Recreation, we're talking about looking at a public-private partnership. Oh, and by the way, the county is also looking into the same deal. They passed it at their last meeting to look at that option. So it must not be that bad of a deal. And then roads. Jack, your argument has always been, hey, guys, we pay you guys money for the roads. We don't see any benefit from that back. Hey, why don't you guys give us two hundred thousand dollars and we will, we will take care of the roads in the city limits? All that two hundred thousand that we give you for dispatch, and the roads, two hundred thousand that you're gonna give us for roads, this is a revenue neutral, budget wash, so that there's real no money change in there, but it ends both arguments to both parties. That is the argument, that is the proposal that we sent over there. And they told us in their, well, the chairman said in his July twenty-third letter to us that the Tiff County Board of Commissioners has been both consistent, wants a proposal that's both consistent with SDS law and equitable to all Tiff County citizens. And I don't see how in the world that proposal right there did not meet both of those requests. And that's what drives me up the wall with, with this deal is because we have tried to talk outside. There's been several people that come to my office and they say, Wes, we're gonna lock you guys in a room with the county, and we're not gonna let y'all out until y'all come to an agreement. I've, I've hear those concerns and those, and those cries of get it together, and tried to put something together. Y'all allowed me to do that, and they still throw it back at us and say, no, we're not gonna do that. I don't know what else to do but to do what we're doing. We can't wait. They also in their letter say, we will start, or, or we'll, we'll keep everything the same as far as service of, the, uh, delivery of the service and the funding through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. But we can't wait and sit on our hands for this.
Where are, where are we in?
We have to be proactive in this because they could easily, hey, that good, that deal that we just had, it was good. No, don't worry about it.
We're in that fiscal year now.
Here's.
We're in it.
And Wes, here's, here's the thing, because you're a big thing to me, because I pushed back, I, I pushed back, we had numerous conversations, you know, give a little, get a little. But, and the roads were my thing because it's three million dollar line item, okay? So what are we asking for that for? Two hundred thousand dollars. That's not being.
You're talking about the, on the roads budget?
On the road. Unreasonable to ask, okay, I'm helping all Tiff, City of Tifton residents are contributing to that three million dollars. You don't spend one penny inside the city limits, but we're paying for it. But we're just asking, okay, at least a token, two hundred thousand dollars. So it's not like we would say, give us half, or that kind of thing. No, it's two hundred thousand, so it was not an unreasonable.
It's just, it's got to that point that is so frustrating that we, you know, it's almost like. You summed it up. I think you're, you're one hundred percent exact on this. You don't know what else to say.
I don't.
And each of you have had your conversations. I don't know where they, who crafts this, this junk that they, they give to us. I, I, I couldn't even cre, I couldn't even make it up. And as trying to manage through it, I have no idea what else to do or what else to say. And so these are, without overcomplicating it, it's just services. So we don't have agreements after these dates. We're just gonna provide the service ourselves. So it's really simple. And if we provide it ourselves, then the, obviously, the county should roll back the millage rate in accordance with what we're doing. And it, it's just as simple, no harm, no foul. But I think that sums it up, Wes, is that we don't know what else to do. We have probably said it all, tried it all, and probably went a little too far with some of the spirit of the conversations because I think you hear some of the conversations, it's twisted. And we really, we're, we're, we're at a point where we can't be, we have to do what's right for the City of Tifton and the taxpayers, and that's where we are tonight. And if you're ready to go forward, then I'm gonna make it happen.
We're ready to go forward.
I think we have, I mean, I'll be honest with you, Pete, I mean, you can't say we didn't give the old college tribe because we have literally, I, I mean.
Well, Rob, is that, Rob, as the attorney, is that a fair assessment? We, we've given, or have we gone past the?
Well, I mean, I, naturally, I've been involved in this for years, and we have been, you know, working diligently and trying to get something resolved. And I certainly share all of y'all's frustration. We have done what I believe all we can do, as everybody said. I thought the last proposal was put on the table was very reasonable. But unfortunately, that was not accepted. So now we're in the process. And we're going through the mediation process, which is the only thing we can do. And unfortunately, you know, sometimes the communications that I had with Mr. Rauw are not as quick as I'd like. When I, you know, I did talk with Nick Kinsley, he, Nick did ask me to copy him and Hank Pittman on my emails because Tony evidently didn't see my last email till late, whatever. Bottom line is, is that, you know, I do believe that I want to maintain the communications so that we can get this thing expedited, particularly the order to the judge holding these sanctions in advance. The bottom line is, you know, we have talked about this and Pete, you know, I think that we're left with the option of providing these services and, and getting up to gear to, to do what we need to do because obviously, it does not seem that we're gonna be able to reach an agreement on these services with the county.
So now you can't email, you have to email others besides Tony Rauw, who I think is paid for by all of our tax money?
That's a good point, Jack.
Is that the most ludicrous thing you have ever heard? How many people do we have to copy to email you, Rob, just so you'll be sure that you see the email?
I, I get the emails.
Okay, I mean, that, I mean, how many more stories do we have to have?
Well, that's the thing. Well, again, I think that what's important, that you understand, we do have the motion pending. That way, we will get an order, one way or the other, from the judge. It just takes a little bit of time because the law requires them to have a certain amount of time to respond to the motion.
While you're saying that, and I wanna make a, a public statement here because I listened to the last, the county meeting, and the chairman made an allegation, or made, called me by name, and said I had made the statement that I wanted to destroy the county. Now, Grady Thompson knows good and darn well that I have never made the statement, I want to destroy the county. And I was quiet, just, anyway, that, that was not true, and he had no business saying, so.
Okay, good summation. I think we're. Okay, good summation, I think we're ready, if, if you're ready to, to do it, we'll, we'll move that way.
Okay, so going back to the, on the animal control, there's someone within ESG who can, can be the person?
No, we have to hire someone.
We have to hire somebody, okay.
And we'll have to do a budget adjustment, because it's gonna cost more to their, you know, we have to.
But it will be tucked up under their umbrella of services, okay?
That's correct, so if you're ready to embark on it, we're, we'll hit go and move forward.
I think we have to, yeah.
I don't think y'all have any choice to be.
We don't.
I mean, unless they, they see this video somehow or another through the Fun Channel or the, or the city of Tifton's website, or YouTube video, whatever, you know? Unless they bring us a proposal that, that makes sense, I mean, we have, we cannot, we have to be proactive instead of reactive, and if we, if we sit on our hands, shame on us.
That's right, as elected officials, as elected officials, you have provided Tiff County Board of Commissioners everything absolutely 100% that's needed. 100% that is needed via the law. Alls they had to do is red pen, or circle something, or give us something back as a suggestion. That's all that needs to happen. You have went beyond what you need to do as elected officials. I don't think you're getting very well reciprocated.
Let's just move forward.
Yeah, let's just move on.
So, I, that's, it's just real, it's just, we've made it so simple, that really, it's, it really kind of.
Why go to mediation when you have a proposal like this already on the table?
It's a great proposal.
Cut that, cut that, you know, I mean, no offense, Rob, that does nothing but get attorneys rich. And I guarantee you, there's not a single person in this county or city that is sick and tired, no offense, Rob, paying attorneys for stuff that we can fix ourselves. And this fixed it, period. I mean, it is what it is.
Time to cut bait.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, okay. I've, I've got one more question, going back to animal control. Okay, so you've got, you found the truck, we can get it here quickly?
Yep.
We all start advertising for that position?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna advertise, I'm gonna use August to do this, yes.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure I was on the right path here, okay? All right, so, any other questions about, I let us down, all the way around in a big circle. Any other questions about animal control services? Okay, let's move on to the resolution approving the jail agreement between the city of Tifton and Turner County.
Okay, Mayor, how about number five, you wanna do that real quick, is this just a couple admin changes?
Oh, sure, yeah, that's fine, yeah, we can go ahead and go do that, that's fine.
Or if you wanna go to jail, it doesn't matter, we can come.
I don't wanna go to jail.
Well, while we're on service delivery, you just wanna talk about the jail.
Yeah, let's go ahead and talk about the jail while we're on service delivery, please.
Okay, so, again, as you know, tax collection and inmate housing really have nothing to do with service delivery. So, they have, the tax collector has been collecting our taxes for the city of Tifton. Sheriff has been taking our inmates for years. Upon the notification that we, we were not gonna have that service anymore, again, you're talking about inmates. I can't wait, kick the can down the road another four or five months, think everything's gonna be okay, it's not. Chief Hyman has done steps that we never thought we would be doing, such as fingerprinting and things that we are having to do with inmates today, that we have to take action on. We have to have some months to, to do this. So one of the considerations, I can't come to you three weeks before and say, we got a problem, we don't have anywhere to take our inmates. So, because of that, he and I did go to Turner County and met with the sheriff, had a great conversation, talked about, there's no hidden, you know, we're not, we're not at odds, it's just a business decision, he knows the scenario, he knows where, where we are, and I asked him if he'd be willing to draft an agreement to take our inmates, and he said gladly. That is in your packet for your consideration, very boiled point, nothing spectacular. Rob has looked at it, we have a couple minor changes to make, and their fee is $35 for, for each inmate compared to fifty.
Fifty-four dollars.
Fifty-four was our proposed. So, it is there for your consideration. Sheriff is a great guy, matter of fact, he was just elected number two for the Sheriff's Association for the state, which, great honor, but I think he'd be someone that we could work with. And it's, is it gonna be, you know, a little change of pace for us, absolutely. But we're gonna do some other things internally with inmates that we've never done to hope, you know, to keep people as out of prison as we, as much as we can. So, we'll do that, but my, my responsibility to you and to our community is that we have a plan right now, if you want to execute it, that we have somewhere to take our inmates.
Move forward, let's go.
I might, can I just add once, one thing? This is also, there's a resolution that would go along with the general amendment. Basically, you have to pass a resolution authorizing the additional penalties of 10% for fines that goes to a jail fund. So, because our previous resolution to, to have those additional penalties applied to Tiff County, I prepared another resolution that'll make that 10% applicable to Turner County.
So, so, so let me back up. Not only are they not gonna give the $250,000 that we budget, but the jail does not also give the 10% that we add to tickets?
That's correct, that'll go to.
And that one is gonna go to Turner County instead of Tiff County.
That's right.
And that is a decision that our, the county commission has made. See, again, that's ridiculous.
Pretty simple, good summation.
More money coming out of this community that could stay here.
But that, that will be a resolution that we want to adopt, so that we can impose those additional penalties for the, for the jail fund.
It's all pretty simple, we can see.
All right.
Yeah, so let me clarify this, thanks Chief, it's very, very important, I mean, for you and for our listeners that Sheriff Gene Scarborough had nothing to do with this.
Absolutely, absolutely, I understand.
This was, this was a county commission decision.
Any other questions or comments about service delivery before we move on to these other items?
I will tell you, I don't have it prepared today, but I will have it probably in two weeks. I'm gonna be putting out the advertisement for the city of Tifton tax collector. That'll be ready here in, in just about two weeks, I'm gonna advertise it for about 30 days. It'll probably take every bit of two months to properly vet somebody, interview and understand what we're doing. I have to go ahead and order the software to get us lined up, but we are, we are in motion to turn the corner in January, so this is gonna be advertised, and once I have that, I'm gonna come back to you probably in September with the green light to order our software. So that, that'll be the third service delivery move I'll make within just two months.
Okay, all right, all right, any other questions before we move on? MJ, you good? Jack?
I'm good.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, let's move on now, the review of the proposed amendments to the general board appointment policy. Danny and Jessica.
Jessica, you just wanna go over, I, there was a couple of things that were outstanding that we caught going through the first run of this. Jessica, Danny, any, you have it highlighted in here, is that correct?
Yeah, I tried to change, I don't remember which board that Danny presented this to, each of the board that his department oversees, HPC, Plamen, Zonan, and KTB, and after they reviewed it, HPC, they have to be a, you know, a resident of the city, they can't be a resident of the county or just a disarmed property owner. So they just wanted us to clarify a little bit more, that if there's an ordinance or policy already in place, that the, the policy, the ordinance policy, the ordinance will be followed, not the, the general policy. So we just added a little bit more clarification in there. And the only other admission is, I didn't clarify how I thought it should work and the way we've always done the oath of office, it's only for new entities, so.
So if they don't have to be, that would be sworn back in?
That's right.
Yeah, because they, you know, so they're not coming each.
So we, we just, we wanna keep this on the record, this is a massive policy, so we're gonna find little things that we did not catch, so we're just keeping you.
Can you make one change, it's just a small little change?
Yes, just noticed it, page 144.
It's, where it says page 144 down at the bottom, and then also where it says page 159 down at the bottom. It shows us historical preservation commission, it shows historic preservation.
Yeah, because on my notes, I must have skipped over it four times.
159.
Historic versus historical.
Yeah, just take the AL out.
You sure it's historical? You sure it's, you sure it's historical?
Yes, you can ask any?
I'm changing it, maybe, oh, no, that was probably me.
I'm sorry, we've been talking about this for.
Just a little grammatical.
It's been in my notes.
Just a little grammatical area that we need to address. Mariana Cassie is no longer on this council, but she'd be very proficient. She always looked at the grammar about things, but anyway, okay, all right, any questions about that? Thank you, Jessica, thank you, Danny, for your work on that. All right, we skipped over number six, we've delayed that. All right, now we wanna talk about, Rob, you wanna talk about the ordinance amending chapter 38, motor vehicles?
Yeah, I will, Mayor. Briefly, back about a year ago, the state repealed several of their statutes regarding the disposition of abandoned motor vehicles. And after reviewing the orders that we had in place, it didn't match up with the state law. So basically, what I have drafted is an amendment to our ordinance, and quite frankly, it's, I think it's a lot better than what we had in place. It's kind of, it better expands the definitions of abandoned vehicles, the definition of a vehicle, and junk cars. Now, that's, we've got a lot of problems here in Tifton with abandoned vehicles and junk cars, and so we've kind of been on hold as far as trying to deal with those, until we were able to kind of get this put together and present to y'all. But again, I think that we've gotten expanded definitions. It also is more streamlined as far as providing notice to the people that have an abandoned or junk car on their property, as well as kind of streamlining the due process. It will still require us to go to municipal court, have the judge declare that it is either a junked or abandoned vehicle, such that it constitutes a nuisance. Once we get the order from the court, the court will give the, the owner whatever number of days the judge gives them to remove the vehicle. If he does not remove the vehicle, then we're going to be lining up a towing and storage facility, who will then take possession of the car, move it to their facility. Once they've moved it to their facility, there's a process that you have to go through when you're going to discard either abandoned or a junk car. And it's quite a cumbersome process. But that process is gonna be left then to the, to the towing and storage owner to make sure he makes the proper reports, the notifications to the owners, to DMV, everything that he needs to do. And once he's complied with the state law as far as notification requirements, time requirements, then he can get a lien on that vehicle and collect any costs associated with his towing and time and going through the process. I think Danny's got someone that, that's willing to take on that, that job. That was one of my biggest questions, who's gonna wanna go through the process? But I am going to get with the, with Danny, next couple of days, we're gonna get what, what this fellow's gonna need as far as the forms that he's gonna need to submit, and a timeline, what he needs to do. So I think this is a, a real good means by which we can get these junked and abandoned cars off of both public and private property as a nuisance, streamline our process, get good due process, and then have someone else deal with handling the actual disposition of the, of the car.
Yeah, I, I completely concur with this, we could make a whole lot of improvements, for sure.
And that's it, thank you.
All right, any questions on the abandoned vehicle change, okay? All right, Pete, we're down to your city manager report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, I'm just handing out, I'm gonna go over this in just a second, because we have a report. So, before I do that, I wanted to share something with you. We talked about this probably two weeks ago, and I talked to Kirsten about it, and she said, sure we can. And before it plays, this is, you're seeing it first, I'm ready to release it. If you are, I think it's exceptional, but we're doing it for Jack. That's what I wanted to label it.
Hi, my name is Gabe Pankowski, and I'm here to tell you why you should wear a mask. Wearing a mask can help us from stopping the spread of coronavirus, and it helps me hug my family.
I'll wear a mask for the citizens of Tifton.
For the employees of the city, so we can continue to protect and serve the people of this great community.
And we don't only wear our masks to protect ourselves, but we need to wear our masks to protect you, your family, and our coworkers.
I wear my mask for my customers.
I wear my mask for all the Blue Devils out there. I wear it for the team.
I wear my mask for my family and my friends, and for everyone to stay safe.
For our downtown shops and restaurants.
For our students and our teachers.
We don't just wear a mask for us, we wear a mask for you. Please wear a mask too.
Hello, I'm Reverend Rudolph Porter, the proud pastor of Shallow Mission Air Baptist Church in Tifton, Georgia. I wear my mask to protect you from me. Please wear your mask to protect me from you.
I wear a mask because I choose to. Also wear a mask for my kids, who'll be starting school next couple of days.
The city of Tifton understands that you don't have to wear a mask. However, we believe it's the right thing to do. Wear a mask for us, we will wear one for you.
Mask up, Tifton, and remember, together we are, Tifton Strong.
Thank you. Jack? He was in his office. So, Kirsten, she just, that's fabulous work, and I appreciate, appreciate her effort. And again, it's the little things that we wanna do to change the mindset, give it a little spin on what everybody's encountering. But I asked Adam Hathaway to get this out on the Tiff County School System Facebook, and they have, they've got a bunch of followers, so we're gonna be, between them and between us, we're gonna launch this live and play it wherever we can, and circulate this just as our part for the community. So thank you for those that were part of it. And I, just about the meaning, it's, it's not a fight anymore, it's just something that, that we're, we're, we're doing together. So, Jack, I'm proud to, to make it for you.
Well, thank you.
I hope, I hope you liked it. So, before I ask Maria to come up and give a quick update on the census, the annual report is, is done. Again, Kirsten finished this with some of the changes, and this is beyond draft. Jessica, I don't think we need to adopt this, right? We don't, right, there's nothing that we need to do in that. So, this is really ready to go, this is your tool, I'm gonna, if, if I don't hear from you, I'm gonna go into print. And Eve, I wanna share that with you and Hayward, to just to give a snapshot of what, what the year has, has unfolded for us. And it's a great document, but I'm really excited about getting it out to our community and to the leaders of our community to share with them as well. This is your work, and this is what you should be most proud of. And I know we deal with a lot of negative stuff, but this is a classic example of what you're doing as elected officials for the community, so, well done. And, you know, I just, I can't thank Kirsten enough for, for her work. If you have any questions, you just text me or shoot me an email, but I'm, I'm really excited about that. Okay, Maria, if you'll come on and give us a quick update of census, please. We only have, well, we're in the homestretch, you know, the census, we hear about it, we sometime, Maria, come on over here, please. We sometimes don't talk about it, and then most of the time, maybe it's too late. We're not doing the exacts of what we could be doing. I know there's a census count committee, and Jessica was part of that, so her and her, her team from, made up a couple people from the community, right? The original one? Right? Right, so there, there's been some activity, and what we wanted to do is go one step forward as the city to say, I want, I wanna thrust it well enough to, let's, let's compete, and let's get people signed up for the census, and I think it's so important for our community. I asked Maria to head up our little, another committee of employees, to come up with some ideas, and I just wanted her to give you an idea of where we're going and what we're doing. Maria?
Okay, so the deadline for the 2020 census is going to be October 31st, so it's right around the corner. We've formed an employee committee to promote participation here at City Hall. Jessica has worked with the IT department to set up a station in the lobby for customers to respond. In one day, our. In one day, our staff had fifteen responses in the lobby, which was really good. And so, and it, and you could see that in less than a week, the Tifton city response rate increased from 53.5% to 53.6%. So, you could see that increase in the numbers there. So, the employee committee will be working across departments, along with the police department, and to go into hard-to-reach neighborhoods and encourage responses. So, that will be a, a all-hands-on-deck effort to, to just give a positive face to the census here in the community. So, excellent.
So, we're gonna keep you posted. A lot of, a lot of great things to come. We're gonna go out, actually, there's, there was an idea to go to the Rosa's Market and to Curtis to set up a little table and, and go to, go to the people. So, we have, you know, we have a wide variety on the committee that I think would be just right for the community, whether it's going into a mobile home park or if it's going out somewhere into a store. So, we, we're gonna, we're gonna push it, and I appreciate your work.
I got a question. You go on to you guys and answer it, probably. If someone has lost or misplaced, there's a code that you're supposed to have, right? To log into the census to complete that. If they've lost that, how would they go about getting a new one or getting, getting one?
Right below where you enter your code online, it says, "I don't have my code." And you put in your address. So, it's right there.
I had mine, so I didn't...
Did you lose your code?
No, 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 no. I'm just saying, I mean, 'cause most people, that, that, I put stuff on Facebook under my, you know, political page, and, and they'll say, "Well, I've lost my code," or whatever, whatever. I didn't know how to respond to that. So, you know, now that I know...
Right. And one other thing, you might want to, just, just a suggestion, and we might, we always can do it, but as you're working in different neighborhoods, let us know so that, because if it's in our district, I mean, I represent overall, but if it's in the districts, I think it would be beneficial to have maybe, you know, one of the council members there. If they, if they, if you want to, just a suggestion to meet citizens and say, "Look, I'm here, and, and we need your help." So, just a thought to add us in there too. So, good job. Okay? Thank you.
Okay, then, lastly, real quick, again, another proud moment, and I know this doesn't tally a whole lot to you, but we received our inspection report back from Georgia Public Service Commission on our natural gas system. And natural gas system, I tell you, it's probably the most dangerous in the business when you talk about application, the rules, the, the compliance that we have to do each and every day. It's just, it is massive. And I've seen some reports where the public commission will come in, and you talk about fines. EPD doesn't even touch what Georgia Public Commission does. And violations in natural gas obviously are very, very serious. So, we underwent our inspection a couple months back between Donna, Donna Pate and Roger Lassiter, who run or manage the, the natural gas department. We have, the report showed no violations this year. And I've, I've been in the business, this is probably my twelfth year running a natural gas system, and I've never seen that. So, hats off to them for delivering.
How long have they both been with the city? They've, they've got to be hundred years between the two of them.
Donna's twenty-something years, and Roger, I think, pretty close.
Yeah.
Too valuable.
Donna's thirty-three years, Roger is twenty-nine.
Yeah, that's amazing.
Sorry, I didn't see Jeff back there. So, that, it just says a lot, you know, for, for the natural gas system.
We need to recognize that and give them a certificate of whatever.
We, we wanted, Donna was, she was not well today, and, and Roger...
Yeah, we have got three calls, they do natural, and later...
Yes, we'll, we'll, we'll get to them. But I, I, this was so impressive. I told Jeff too, I just, it's, you know, thanks to them and each and every day. But this is, it's just big time when you see results like this. So, good, good on us. That's, that is all I have for today.
Excellent. Okay, we'll quickly run through mayor council comments. MJ? Yeah. You want to, you want to do that now? You have a question now? Okay.
Is that okay?
Sure. Yes.
You know, the city-county thing is very important to a lot of people. But I want to tell you all this, we, usually when things like this happen, we get a lot of calls at the TV station. I know, we're the fun channel, but some of the stuff to do is not that much fun, and we do here. Y'all's decision to go on your own and stop the argument, I've made one complaint, and after I explained it to the person that we're perfectly behind y'all on with, there is a general consensus in the community that they are tired of the bickering.
As are we.
And I, I think y'all are too.
Yes.
And I, I want to encourage you from them, not just from me. I'm, I live in the city and the county.
I do too.
And I, I want to tell you that your support is tremendous. And I have been on this board for thirty-four years, not y'all, nor kids. I, I, this, this board has had a tremendous high rating of support and confidence all the way across. And, and y'all need to know that sometimes because y'all are making really tough decisions, and we are in the middle of a COVID-19 crisis, and we're in the middle of a lot of things happening, and we don't know where sales tax money is gonna be and vice versa. And this is a big decision. But I'm telling you today now that the community support in Tifton, and that's where it matters for y'all, because we have people, that them in the city, that we're all counties. But the, the approval of what y'all are doing is, is, is high.
Well, thank you.
And I, I wanted to say that and encourage y'all to make careful decisions and move us forward so that we can stop the bickering, and then we can focus on these things to make us just a great community, which we already are, but you know, we can, we can go to that very next level. And, and with this team, and it, and it always leaves the door open for some of the people that maybe aren't working with y'all, and I'm not gonna say names, but, but maybe they might see the light and say, you know, they seem to be having a good time over there, and maybe we would have a good time with them. I, I know that sounds kind of trawlerish to a little...
No.
But, but, again, let me say that to y'all, and, and one more thing. The piece on the mask was excellent, and she is tremendous. The person is tremendous. We would gladly run that free if we can get a copy of it.
Absolutely.
One more thing before I go, on the census, as important as it is, if y'all will produce something on the report or get us a government, something, we will run that and try to get these census numbers up there.
Thank you.
Now, in terms of the census, Mayor...
It's very important. We, all of the funding that we receive, state, federal funding, it comes, it's all based on census numbers.
It's all about numbers.
All about numbers.
We get those numbers, we're gonna want, we'll be doing good.
Well, thank you for that, Hayward.
And, and that's all I want to tell you, because we did cause, uh, people are just tired of it. They don't want to talk to us anymore. They want to go to districts, things, and we're still...
Well, thank you.
And I want to tell you that, so you don't worry.
Thank you. All right, MJ, what you got?
No comments today.
No comments. It's hard to follow that, isn't it? Jack?
Well, I'll follow, Hayward. I will, the, the video was excellent on mask. Everybody knows my position on mask. If you don't, Hayward and I have had an exchange on Facebook about masks, and so you can go to either one of our, Hayward's page, and we can talk about... We can talk about that and, and the schools and that whole issue there. My, my one thing today, and I brought it up before, but I'd like to have some action taken on this time. And, and this is around, especially with schools start with, with these trap teams and these kids, and I'm so tired of them running by my house with the traffic, fast-moving traffic. And I'd like to have Chief send a letter to the school, to Adam Hathaway, whether Rob has, has to pipe in about what the law says. I think they're confused. I've had a discussion, and they're confused as to what the law says. But we need to spell it out for them, that the law says you run against the traffic. You don't run with the traffic. And I think we need to put them on notice, that this is what the law says. It's safe, it's for safety, and, and they need to get this word out to these coaches who will not listen, and it's a dangerous situation. And I'd like to see that letter go out just saying, "Here, here's what it is. Please note, you know, th- this is what, this is what it says." And, I mean, no, no threat that we're gonna stop them and all of that, but I think once they, they see it in writing, that here's the law, they want to follow the law too. And so, I've asked that we, we do that and, and save somebody's life. If it saves one kid from getting hit by a car, it, it was worth it. So, that's all I've got.
All right, thank you. Wes?
Yeah, I'll just kind of give a real quick update. You know, the committee met with the YMCA, got several meetings planned in the future. A lot of good conversation was had. We plan on ha, continuing those conversations in the next couple of weeks. We just kind of wanted to say positive talks, a lot of good ideas being floated around on both ends. So, just kind of wanted to give you a quick update on that.
Excellent. All right, I have no real comments. I think we've covered a lot of ground tonight. And as always, I appreciate the opportunity to work with each of you as our fellow council members and in our city management and our entire city team. Dana, again, congratulations on an outstanding audit. Jeff, to your team at ESG, thank you for all you're doing to keep our roads clean and safe. And I know y'all are putting up new signs today in historic district. MJ, you saw the picture, we're excited about that. So, there are so many great things going on in Tifton, and I'm just glad to be a part of it. So, that being said, we do need to go into executive session for real estate purposes, I believe. So, real estate and legal. So, I will need a motion to go into executive session for those reasons.
Salute.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, MJ. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll take about a two-minute break, and then we will...